All right, well, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for being here. First, I would like to take a moment, if you all would. I would like to observe, just for a moment, a moment of silence for Chicago firefighter and EMT Lieutenant Kevin Ward. If we can just take a moment of silence, please. Lieutenant Ward was a dedicated and very courageous public servant, and our city will be forever indebted to his sacrifice. You know, in fact, with this loss, we're constantly reminded of how precious our first responders are. In fact, we must continue to demonstrate gratitude for Chicago's firefighters, EMTs, and police officers who sacrifice their lives every single day. So let's make sure that we comfort our Chicago Fire Department as they grieve their fallen brother. But together, I'm confident, we can build a city that is worthy of their sacrifice and their service. Thank you all. So, you know, as the summer winds down, I want to first acknowledge some of the highlights from the first few months of our administration. You know, we achieved many of the dynamics that we set out, and our goal was to rapidly expand summer employment for our young people. Over 24,000 summer job opportunities for young people. We also expanded our Merrill Youth Commission, which is now comprised of 40 members. This was a great start to how we use the full force of government to bring together corporate partners, the philanthropic partners, our faith in labor, and, of course, the entire community, to create opportunities that will put our young people on a path to success. This initiative and the work of the Office of Community Safety to leverage the full force of government and law enforcement have all contributed to the reduction of violent crime this summer. The appointment of Chief Larry Snelly, as I've said, is a son of Inglewood. That's only going to strengthen our work as we continue to create a better, stronger, and safer Chicago. You know, we wrapped up this last weekend with the Taste of Chicago, and as we close out this fantastic summer of festivals, I just want to highlight a couple, okay? Sueños, Chosen Few, Market Days, Hyde Park Summer Fest, the African Festival of the Arts, and dozens of community-based events. It was a great summer. And in fact, I had a chance to actually move around the city and participate in some of the festivities and the activities that ultimately speak to the soul of who we are. And here's the thing, though. Lollapalooza, many of you got a chance to see me release my first album as I introduced the first acts there. But here's some really good news. Lollapalooza has continued to grow our economy, and this time, because of the creative work and the hard work of this city, we generated more than $422 million, attracting nearly half a million people to the lakefront, contributing more tax revenue to the city, more than we've ever seen before. We also saw a number of developments in the business sector, such as the expansion of logistic firms, total quality logistics, the expansion of New Horizon Steel, which is the largest Black-owned steel company in Chicago, and $232 million purchase of an apartment building in the West Loop, the highest price paid for a downtown apartment building since before COVID-19. This combined with Google's ongoing billion-dollar redevelopment of the Thompson Center certainly demonstrates the resiliency and the economic opportunities that the Central Business District will inherit. Together, we will continue to accelerate our commercial revitalization downtown and connect that growth to every part of our city. I do want to talk about our appointments as well. So I want to congratulate two people in particular. To secure the future of our environment, we confirmed Angela Tovar as our Chief Sustainability Officer, and I believe her daughter is clapping. To secure our financial future, we have confirmed Chase Rowinko as our comptroller. Let's give him a nice one. And so, as Chief Sustainability Officer, Angela will continue to build upon the three years that she's already committed to this role and continue her mission to advance a robust climate and sustainability agenda. It will be also the focus of my administration to achieve environmental justice for all communities, to make Chicago a leader in sustainability. I'm glad to follow and, of course, continue to work alongside of Angela's expertise as she continues to guide the city of Chicago with her work and her leadership. And, of course, our comptroller, Chase, will utilize his years of experience at the city and state, including as Director of Banking for the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulations, to provide strong financial management for the city. So I look forward to working with Angela and Chase. And now, also today, as we've indicated over the course of our time as organizers, many of us in the city, that it's well past time that treatment-not-trauma becomes a reality for the city of Chicago. And so today, we introduce an ordinance that would establish a working group that's tasked with developing and providing suggestions around a framework and a roadmap for the city to expand mental health clinical services. And here's what's most important about that, too, is that we provide a non-police response for behavioral and mental health crises. And so, to speak on that, we have a well-known organizer, Southside Together, Organizing for Power. Cheryl, would you like to provide a few remarks there?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So I really want to emphasize that this moment is a moment that is about, one, it's been hard fought. Thirty years ago, Chicago had 19 public mental health centers and a free alcohol treatment center. Since then, 14 centers were closed, leaving only five for all of Chicago. And for over decades, Chicagoans have been fighting for mental health justice and the restoration of public mental health infrastructure. Five years ago, we heard campaign promises that were quickly forgotten and easily broken, but the movement kept fighting for health justice. Today, we have this new ordinance. Creating the working group is a very monumental first step towards reopening the closed public mental health centers, creating appropriate mental health crisis response, and addressing crisis prevention. And very, very importantly, for the first time, we finally get input as community members on what crisis response and community care should look like, so we can move the treatment-not-trauma model forward and move towards true health justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl, and thank you for your commitment to making Chicago safer and more inclusive, and, of course, a more compassionate city. Also in council today, we reintroduced the Bring Chicago Home Ballot Referendum Resolution, which is a crucial next step in eradicating homelessness for the residents of the city of Chicago. And so to say more, you're going to hear from Elekta Bay, who is an organizer, outreach coordinator for Communities United, and, of course, a wonderful volunteer for the Bring Chicago Home Coalition.
My name is Elekta Bay, and I am a member of Bring Chicago Home Coalition. And the first thing I want to do is thank you, Mayor, for doing what you said you was going to do when you ran. You said that you was going to bring Chicago home, and I have to say, we appreciate that you did do this. So thank you for that. I'm going to tell you a little bit about me, and I'm going to be reading, because, you know, but I'm going to tell you a little bit about me. Years ago, I was, you know, I've been homeless not just one time, but I'm going to tell you my most recent time. I had, my husband's been married for 46 years, and he passed. And, you know, you have that support system with you, you know, that's the person that helps you when you have hard times. So I got lost in them hard times. And delivered family, I had to double up. I had my five grandchildren with me, and so we had, you know, back and forth. I lived on, I used to live in Westridge, so I had family live in Roseland. We would get the bus, in Roseland, we'd take the bus from 120th all the way to 6700 North on Whipple, all the way to the other side of town to go to school. We did this every day. We would get up at 4 o'clock in the morning and get to school, and by 9 o'clock at night, we'd have made it home. So for me, Bring Chicago Home is very important. It's because when you're homeless, it's a very embarrassing thing. And nine times out of 10, you teach your kids to say, shh, don't talk about it. Don't tell nobody at school. I don't want to get emotional, but don't tell nobody at school about it, you know, because it is embarrassing. So, you know, it's like teaching your kids to lie, you know? So, you know, you need to know and feel that your child and your grandkids don't have to tell lies. You don't want them to be, they don't want them to go home or go up to school and tell people, we were sleeping on the floor, or, you know, we were sleeping in a car, or, you know, we didn't get our homework done, or we didn't take a bath, them kind of things when you're homeless. And what it does is it crushes you. As a parent, it crushes your soul, it just crushes you to see that you cannot take care of your child or your grandchild, because that's our responsibility, it's not theirs. As a Westridge community leader, I was able to go out and build myself up a little bit because I realized that in order for me to help other people, I need to first acknowledge what was happening to me. So when I knocked on people's doors and talked to people about being homeless, or that they need light, gas, whatever they need, I was able to connect with them and let them know it's not embarrassing. You know, people are homeless, it's not embarrassing to be homeless. It's a struggle, and we got to find a way to solve that. So, because of that, I've been fighting about Bring Chicago Home. I don't want anybody, and I mean nobody, to feel, I keep going off the paper, I'm sorry. I don't want anybody to feel like I felt. I felt terrible. I felt ashamed and embarrassed about being homeless. Do you know, you could go outside and you could see a lady at the bus stop with her car, you know she's homeless. Or, you know, you could see your nephew on the couch, you know he homeless because he's on your couch every night. But do you see the person who comes to work every day? And they don't say they're homeless. They're not saying it, but it's there. And so they live in that false lie because they're embarrassed. We don't want nobody to be embarrassed, and not this great city of Chicago with this great mayor. We don't need to be embarrassed about homeless. We need to fight it. So I didn't want, I didn't want people to feel like I did and to feel down because the people they depended, depend on them, they can't take care of. So for me, homelessness is more than just people on the streets. It's more than just doubling up, because people can be right in your face, and like I said, you don't even know they're homeless. For so long, we have been putting a bad nature on homelessness. And when you pull it off, guess what happens? It's scab. There's residue, something there. We got to stop that. We got to do this, we got to bring Chicago home. We got to give people permanent housing. We need to help heal. The only way you can heal is with permanent housing, because it's here. And one of the things that happens is that when you're homeless, and when you're not homeless anymore, guess what? You can still go back and feel that same thing you felt when you was homeless. It doesn't go away. So for me, I'm very excited for to be introducing, for to introduce and to continue to work with the mayor in bringing Chicago home. And I just, you know, we got to cross some Ts and dots some Is, but he has been there, he has his people been there to help us with this, and we're going to bring Chicago home. I just want to tell, thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your dedication and commitment and love for the people of Chicago, to use your example as a way to organize and fight. That's a true testament of your character and who we are as a city. And so, as Elekta has articulated, you know, this is very, very, very much personal for all of us up here today. And as many of you all know, my older brother Leon, this was years ago, because of untreated trauma, died addicted and unhoused. And so the time to act is now. Time to act is now. So next, as you all know, the city of Chicago continues to receive unprecedented levels of new arrivals on buses from the state of Texas and increasingly on flights that have been originating from San Antonio in Houston, as well as New York and other cities, arriving daily at O'Hare and sometimes at Midway. To be clear, we did not choose this reality, but we must act. The cost of inaction could cause far more desperation in a situation that could be unmanageable. And so, as I've articulated and expressed before, we are a city of broad shoulders. I'm confident we will survive this moment. We will get to the other side of this, and we'll do it together. We're at a critical point in our mission, because as our new arrivals continue to land in police stations and at the airports, this is not sustainable, and it's not suitable for shelters. Now, I've opened up 12 new temporary shelters since coming into office, significantly expanding housing case management to facilitate resettlement, and we've secured additional resources and support from the state and Cook County. The rapid growth of people arriving is outpacing, however, our efforts to resettle or assist with reuniting with families, family members who are sponsoring them outside of the city of Chicago. As I expressed last week, I have outlined a strategic plan that sets our priorities for this next phase of our response. And so, one, we must and we will replace police stations with base camps before inclement weather and as new arrivals continue to arrive. We're going to improve safety and shelter operations with a comprehensive community plan at every single shelter to ensure security in and outside of the shelter, to make sure that we have the proper staff, and again, to make sure that the surrounding community is supported. In this strategic plan, we are applying cost savings, strategies to support the shelters by employing Chicagoans for staffing and meal service. We're going to work to accelerate the resettlement of the newly arrivals by increasing the volume of workers that can help assist families as they look to resettle in Chicago and in the surrounding communities. And of course, we're going to continue to work in our strategic plan to manage the number of individuals who are coming to Chicago in partnership with the adjacent municipalities, and make sure that we have tighter coordination for points of entry. And then finally, I've released the 2024 City of Chicago Budget Forecast this week, which paints a realistic view of our city's financial picture. The projected budget deficit is something that I anticipated during my campaign and provides a much more accurate view of our finances than the previous April report, because we are including the cost of the new arrival mission, contractual wage obligations, and of course, a far more reliable revenue projection. As an administration, we are fully committed to transparency and effective governance. Our team is led by my Budget Director, Annette Guzman. Our team will craft a balanced budget that holds the line on property taxes and delivers on our priorities of investing in people and to make sure that our finances are sustained. So at this time, I will accept questions, but before I do, I do want to acknowledge my colleagues who are with me today, Alders Burnett, Hadden, Rosa, Sanchez, Martin, and Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with questions in the back. One question, and see how far we can get. Dana.
Hi.
Hi.
So how are you going to close the budget gap? What is, what are you cutting? What is the plan?
Yeah. Well, I mean, first of all, we're going to continue to work with all of our sister agencies, I'm sorry, all with our departments, as well as with my colleagues, to craft a budget that speaks to our values. And as I said when I was campaigning, that we're going to make sure that we find efficiencies within the budget that can help move our budget towards a balanced presentation. As far as any more specific decisions, these are collective decisions that ultimately our budget team, working with, again, the Alders, that will help make more determination. But what I'm also very clear about is, as I said before, making critical investments and balancing a budget that doesn't place the burden on working people, those are our values, and we're not going to negotiate those.
Hey, Lee John Greco with Cranes. So you've said that you want to move to community-based organizations to keep the money in Chicago when it comes to the migrant response. I'm curious if those previous contractors, like Favorite, for instance, which is, I think, from Kansas, if they've gone over budget? And if that's the case, is there going to be any language in the new RFPs that would put the onus on the contractor if they go over budget, like a fixed-price contract sort of thing?
Well, first of all, you know, when I was sworn in 16 weeks ago, one of the first things we looked at was that very contract, and we worked to negotiate it in a way that provides far more flexibility and the reduction of costs. As far as the language of this RFP, look, the cost savings alone that will ultimately occur as it relates to hiring people and organizations who can provide meal services as well as staffing, I'm confident that it's going to be far more advantageous for taxpayers. And that's why we've actually called for this RFP in the first place. As far as specific language, quite frankly, I'll just have somebody get back with you to give you more articulation around that. Thank you very much for your question.
Hi, Michael McDevitt with the Daily Line. I wanted to ask about the ordinance introduced today related to the Community Benefits Agreement for South Shore residents affected by the Obama Center. Do you support all the provisions laid out in that ordinance? And if not all of them, which ones are?
Yeah, well, I support, thank you for that question. What I support is having a benefits agreement that doesn't push families out of the very community in which they've been raised in or they've raised a family in. Now, look, I'm sure you're familiar with the legislative process. We're going to go through each piece of legislation, just like we've done with Bring Chicago Home, to come to an agreement that is in the spirit in which the ordinance and the idea was actually introduced. That's what we call co-governance. I think we talked about that today, right, Carlos? That co-governance requires us all to work together. And what we're clear about, though, is that a benefits agreement that speaks to the needs of the people who live there should have a right to remain there. And that's what I'm committed to doing in my role, not just with this benefits agreement, but every piece of legislation that speaks to our values. Thank you for that question.
How you doing, Mayor?
I'm doing well, thank you for asking. Our Cubbies have disappointed me these last couple of days, but I'm slowly recovering.
That's what they do. Jim Daly, South Side Weekly. I've spoken to many volunteers with the mutual aid networks over the last weeks and months, and some of the things they're asking for currently are that the administration develop a welcoming city bill of rights that guarantees certain things like dignity, food, shelter to asylum seekers, as well as while they're staying at the police districts, standardizing operating procedures across police districts, so we don't have different situations emerging at different districts. And then the other thing they've asked for, they've talked about how they've all spent a lot of money helping migrants, and they've asked if there's any way that they can be made whole by the city. Do you have any comments about any of those requests?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of our residents who have provided mutual aid. It's really, it's been remarkable to see how Chicagoans have leaned in to support these families. The conditions in which these families are arriving in really requires all of us to do as much as possible. As far as their goals of having a standardized operation that's consistent, that's the strategic plan that I've laid out. The police districts are not an appropriate landing zone for these families. It's quite undignified. So we're going to continue to work with all of our partners to ensure a baseline of support and a standardization as far as how the city can make people whole. That's a conversation that I'm happy to have with my Budget Director, Annette Guzman, along with the 50 alderpersons that also represent this body of government.
Hey, Mayor. Quinn from Block Club. You mentioned the decline we're seeing in violent crime citywide, but this summer on the northwest side, particularly West Town and Logan Square.
All right, that's it, folks. Thank you for your time.
Particularly in West Town and Logan Square, we've seen a dramatic surge in armed robberies. What is the city doing right now to stem those? And what would you say to neighbors who are concerned that they might be attacked next?
Look, I understand the concern. I do. I mean, you know, like, it's not lost on anyone that the rise in robberies has left a great deal of trepidation and anxiety. Our police department is deploying a strategy to respond and to address this growing dynamic. And I'm grateful that there is a strategic plan that is also coordinating efforts with the state as well as the county. This is a tough dynamic, right? Because these attackers are moving with a pace that is quite severe, and the type of response that the police department continues to establish, of course, is in coordination with all of our agencies. Of course, again, the partnership that we have maintained with the state police, as well as the county government, is one that we're going to have to continue to lean on. It is an effort that I appreciate the work that our police department is doing, and, of course, no one is going to say that we shouldn't do more. And so we're continuing our efforts to make sure that we curb all violence that takes place in the city of Chicago. Thank you for that question.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
So your administration released a letter from whistleblowers in Melissa Conyers-Urvan's office alleging misconduct and misuse of government resources. Are you concerned about the allegations and what, yeah, are you concerned about the allegations? And can you talk about why you decided to release the letter?
Well, as I understand it, the Attorney General of the state of Illinois made it very clear that this was an expectation that should have been fulfilled before I arrived. So we just simply, we responded to the law. This, these allegations have been settled, and, you know, my hope is that we all, as public servants, continue to earn the trust of the people who send us here, and that all of us are ultimately held to a standard that I believe is quite reasonable. Thank you.
Monica.
Hi, Monica, with Axios Chicago. Today, you introduced Bring Chicago Home, and many people are speaking of it as a pretty done deal. It's been modified a bit and introduced today. How confident are you that it will appear on the ballot in March 2024?
Very confident.
Tonya Hill from the Tribe. Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
I wanted to ask about the migrant situation. Yesterday, there was a meeting in the 21st Ward, and some of the sentiment from neighbors mirrors what we heard from Black residents in South Shore. So I'm curious about how your administration will ensure that community members are involved in this, because we're hearing that you're going to be looking at ward by ward. So how will you, how will you make sure that everybody's included in that process?
Well, the first, let me just acknowledge that the sentiment that exists in the 21st Ward, these are feelings and perspectives that are citywide, that people are concerned. That's why I'm acting, because any short of action and inaction will inevitably lead to an unmanaged dynamic that will cost us more. There are 50 alderpeople who all got the same briefing. Everybody knows their assignment. That's what leaders do. We take charge, we offer direction, we gain perspective from one another, and then we act. That's what I've done. That's what we will continue to do. Let me assure the city of Chicago that we take this incredibly seriously. We do. And I understand some of the anxiety that exists, and that's why the strategic plan that we've laid out has asked all of our Alders to leave these conversations. The full force of my administration is showing up every single day. There is, this level of government is working really hard, y'all. We are. It's going to take some sacrifice from every level. It's going to take some sacrifice from every level of government. And the 21st Ward residents, the 34th Ward residents, from first to 50th, that we're in the neighborhoods, talking to people, having conversations, looking for spaces in which we can help deal with this humanitarian endeavor. Now, here's some encouraging news. 39th Ward, Alderwoman Sam Nugent, through her work and working with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, helped the City of Chicago purchase a building that will be used not just for this immediate crises, but this is a facility that we can use in the future. We did that together, not because we flinch in this city. I don't flinch. In fact, I don't duck. I swing. Thank you for that question.
Hello, Mayor. Craig Delamore, WBDM Radio.
I like how you announce yourself as if nobody knows Craig.
Just following along with everyone else. But it's been hard not to notice how sometimes loud the council meetings have gotten with disruptions and with a rambunctious group, if not crowd. And there's free speech, but then it's sometimes hard to hear what aldermen are saying to each other. Where are you going to draw the line as these things keep happening?
Yeah. Look, thank you for, for acknowledging that. And this is what I said today, that, you know, people should sign up for public comments and they should make appointments in meetings with their alderpeople, with their alderpersons. Show up to community meetings. I am trying hard not to have to remove people from, from the space. I believe in open discussion. And some of the language that is coming across the other side is, it's hurtful and it is disrespectful. And today, I made it very clear that if it is, if that's your form of expression, we're, we're going to have to take the next step and remove those individuals, primarily because I just want to make sure that the conversations are fluid and people can hear. Now, what I will say, though, Craig, City Council, we're quite calm right now. So can I get at least a half a credit? So, but it's a legitimate concern. In fact, one of our colleagues was speaking today, you know, 14th Ward, first Mexican to represent the 14th Ward. She is an immigrant and spoke so eloquently in her native tongue. And that's who we really are as a city. Now, let me just be very clear, that some of the disruption that you heard today, this is a super, super, super small portion of how the vast majority of the people engage today. Now, I can tell you, as a seventh grade teacher, I'm a little familiar with some of that ruckus. And we'll, we'll, we'll get it. We'll get it. We'll, we'll have a stronger presentation, but thank you for, for acknowledging that.
Hi, Mayor. Mariah Wolfle, WBEZ. Do you plan to permanently do away with the policy that ties inflation to property tax increases? Or are you just planning to skip it this year? And if you are planning to permanently do away with it, do you have a plan to, for a long-form revenue stream to fund pensions in the way that property tax increases do this year?
Excellent question. Thank you for that question. Very well situated. So as I've said, though, multiple times, is that, you know, you're not going to undo the wrongs of the past in one budget. You know, so it's going to take multiple budgets to move in the direction that we are clearly already headed in, right? So it's not like, you know, you know, we are tippy-toeing around our values, you know? So within the first 16 weeks, we made it very clear what we believe. You know, as far as, you know, generating revenue, I mean, I've made that commitment too during the campaign. In fact, many people said it was the wrong thing to do. I was the only person who called out the realities of the budget that we are now dealing with. And Bring Chicago Home is just one example of how we can generate revenue to address one of the dynamics that has been unaddressed for too long. And, look, I had a very good conversation with our Vice Mayor yesterday and his work around public housing and creating affordability at a time when, I don't know, I think I might have been 19 years old when you got elected. But no, he's, he's been on the front line with this. And so, it's, it's, it's actually, you know, quite exhilarating to know that the work that Alderman Burnett has been leading for some time, you're seeing that come to fruition. Same dynamic's going to be as it relates to this budget. People have been calling for progressive revenue as long as Carlos has been here. You know, when I was an organizer, we, we actually, remember, we presented revenue ideas that this body had a tough time accepting. Well, we're here now. And so, we're heading in the right direction, though. But thank you for that question.
Hi, Mayor. Heather Shrown, WTTW. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Today, the City Council approved a $25 million settlement for two men who spent a combined 34 years in prison, convicted of a crime they did not commit. I did a little bit of math, and that brings the total to $178 million in settlements tied to wrongful convictions since January of 2019. How can you continue to ask Chicagoans to bear the burden for this kind of misconduct? And what can you do to address the dozens of looming lawsuits that could cost taxpayers additional millions of dollars?
These families that were tortured and brutalized into false confession, on behalf of the City of Chicago, we are sorry. These are mostly Black men. It's painful. Now, of course, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're making critical investments and righting the wrongs of, of a time ago. Constitutional policing is important. Having someone like Chief Snelling, who understands the importance of training police officers to engage with residents in a dignified manner, is going to be important. And it, it is a, it is a cost when we fail. There is a cost to it. There's going to be a cost to our investments for generations of neglect within our public neighborhood schools. Some of those buildings that were closed, and thank you for the great reporting around this work, all of you. You know, someone asked me, you know, Mayor Johnson, why don't you use some of those closed school buildings? My, my Deputy Chief of Staff, we've looked at all of them. Some of them have damage that would take 12 to 15 million dollars to repair. And that's a building. We're talking about souls. You got to get it right. Thank you for that question.
Hi there. All my other questions have been asked, so you-
How many questions did you come with?
As, as many as I need. You never know.
That's a good point. Way to come to class prepared.
Plenty, like, tucked in, just in case. But you biked to work today. Was that the first time you did that? What were your thoughts? Will that be a regular occurrence? And, I don't know, what, what did you think of your route?
Oh, wow. So I, I, I do ride my bike quite a bit. It's good to be back in a routine where I can do it. It's, it's a very peaceful experience for me. Now, can I just brag for a minute, though? So the bike route that I have regularly, it's about eight miles. According to MapQuest, it could take you 41 to 42 minutes. Yes. You like that? That was for you, Craig. Pages and pages of directions. Google Maps. It's a 42-minute bike ride. So yesterday, I broke my all-time record. I rode eight miles in 31 minutes and 19 seconds. So the bike route downtown to work, this was the first time I rode it all the way into work. It took me less time to ride my bike to City Hall than it takes me to drive. And, you know, I know there are a lot of bike, you know, activists and organizers out there that are calling for, you know, a real transportation investment that provides, you know, real opportunities for people to move around this city in a safe way. The route was beautiful, you know, riding through Austin, west and east Garfield Park, riding through the loop through the United Center. Maybe when I do finally release my album, I'll have that as part of the scenery, moving through the city. But once we got downtown, what I was actually most impressed by was the familiarity that drivers have with bikers. It's, there's a little ways to go, but they certainly have gotten better. The bus only lanes, the traffic signals, we are certainly heading in the right direction. And just for the record, it did take me 34 minutes to ride from Austin downtown Chicago. And so, that's the record to beat if anybody wants to try. But see, here's the problem, though. Alderman Burnett lives in the West Loop, so he's a little bit closer. So it should only take him 12 minutes. Timidness. All right, my bad, brother. Thank you.
How come Ronnie said I couldn't ride with you? No, I asked Ronnie if I could go for rides with you.
Oh, he said he likes his rides peaceful and like, it's a chance to clear his head. We didn't need questions about the CPI or whatever you want to know about, so.
Well, this is why you have to have a co-teacher in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Bennett Haberly with NBC5. I wanted to ask about some of the expenses associated with caring for the new arrivals in the City of Chicago. For months, we've been asking for records showing specifics on where these dollars are flowing. So far, we've just received a couple of contracts, a spreadsheet, and two pages of an invoice showing that some of the staffers working at Favorite Staffing are making more than $135 an hour. Some of the aldermen today made mention the fact that they have not received specifics. So my question just is, can you and your administration commit to being more transparent and release some of the documents that have been withheld?
So let me just make sure that you're clear and everybody else is clear here. Every single Monday, there's a conversation with Alders who are part of a working group. Every Friday, there's an email that is sent so that all the Alders could see it. We have released information, providing the details of the fact that when we appropriated the first $51 million, I was the person that said that the vast majority of it went to staffing. Now, if you're looking for some more specific items, what you want to know about, like how much this costs for spoons or forks, I just want you to be very clear that we have released a very detailed response of how we are dealing in addressing this humanitarian endeavor. If you're asking for us to do it on a more regular basis, of course, we can do that. But it has certainly taken us, of course, a great deal of work to bring people together so that everyone understands the dynamic. And my administration is transparent. It is quite transparent. Thank you.
Shia. Hi, it's Shia from Politico. Nice to see you.
Always.
In a general way, can you talk about the frustration that you, the city must be feeling, City Hall, about FEMA not communicating with organizations about when they're sending new arrivals to the city or those, those other cities not communicating with you? It seems like it's kind of a cluster.
Thank you for the PG version. Look, we have to have better coordination. I mean, without a doubt. And the First Deputy Mayor for Immigrant, Migrant and Refugee Rights, she's going to be in DC next week. I'll be in DC next week as well. All of us have to, to do more and do better. I believe that was expressed. And we're up for it.
FEMA, are you meeting us?
Well, I'm just saying, every level of government. As far as FEMA's, the, as far as the dynamic that is not as transparent, as our gentleman has expressed, that, that has to be better. And that's why we're going to spend some time in DC next week to help better coordinate our efforts. Thank you for that question, though.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all very much. Well done, you all.